All right, my clock just turned six thirty and I see that we have a quorum of the council present in the room, so I will call a meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item up is our consent agenda. Under consent agenda, we have vouchers totaling printed small, pardon me, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. We also have minutes from our July sixteen, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, as well as minutes from the July eighteen, twenty twenty-four special meeting. And finally, CDBG vouchers totaling a hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers?
Just, just so you're aware, and I don't know if, sometimes when it says the state of Kansas, we're paying large sums of money to them, those are bond payments. And so, six hundred and thirty thousand-ish dollars here are going for bond payments, and then we had our power bill. So that's why it's such a huge amount. This is atypical. Um, and when, when you have to pay your, your bond payments to the state, they require that you pay them a month in advance, so it's really that's how they do it. So that's why we have so many, and that's why it's so high.
Okay. Everyone received copies of the minutes from the, uh, July sixteen regular meeting? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? And how about the minutes from our July eighteen, twenty twenty-four special meeting? Got those? Any questions or corrections there? And finally, uh, any questions regarding the CDBG vouchers? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll do that.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilman Wilkins, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, now, we come to our first opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here in the room or online that would care to address the council? Okay, we'll close our public comment opportunity. There will be another later in the meeting. And we will go to our annual department head report. And tonight, we have David Lockwood, our sanitation, uh, supervisor, uh, present to, uh, deliver his report. David?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Lockwood. I'm the sanitation supervisor. This year, I've been operating out of the sewer plant property at the end of Wilson. I am now expecting to move into the old AMPI maintenance shop on September first. This will allow me a place to work on trucks and containers and place to keep the trucks out of the weather. Truck repairs are currently being handled by Mike Morales. Keeping the repairs and maintenance local is important to me. Maintenance and repairs for the trucks require much of the sanitation budget. This year, we have acquired a new driver operator, Chris Cornell. He is a veteran who served in the army. He is a prompt and very conscientious person. While he did have a CDL when hired, he had little actual driving experience and has made great strides in competency. This allows me to use the auto car for residential trash pickup, while Chris uses the Peterbilt, which is now paid off for commercial trash and recycle. Keeping, keeping the truck off the residential streets as much as possible. No, that was a big concern at one time. We recently sold the old trash truck. Have, I've been weeding out the two and three yard dumpsters that were, are unusable. Once they are pared down, we need to start replacing them with new dumpsters. This will cost, well, we also need to start purchasing poly carts and trash for trash. We have plenty of carts for recycling. This will cost around seven thousand for the minimum order of a hundred carts, fifty of the ninety-five gallon and fifty of the sixty-five gallon. And we plan to replace all of the thirty-five gallon carts as they cannot be effectively manipulated by the trash truck. That will be it. Thank you, and if you have any questions?
The, um, the large trash truck, um, I will say that, uh, that was definitely one of those unintended consequence decisions. When we purchased that thing, we thought, uh, bigger would be better. And it turned out that bigger was not necessarily better.
Yes. I mean, it's, it's, it's working well. I mean, this has a lot of, um, sensors, all the new vehicles, there's always issues with the little sensors there and there. But as far as yeah, the weight of it, that's ten thousand pounds more than just a normal trash truck. So it carries a lot of weight. It's gonna do a lot of damage.
So how do you feel about the auto car in terms of, uh, where, or both for that matter, in terms of their usable life? Are we still in in decent shape?
Yes, sir. I've been putting some money into all of them to keep them running. And we're gonna have little things that, that trucks are full-time maintenance and repair. Especially when you're using them every single day. And eventually, we need to replace them. Because it's gonna get, point it's not cost effective.
In addition to the, the two, uh, trash trucks, is there, are there any other vehicles that we've assigned to the sanitation department?
Service truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have service truck.
Okay, will that be part of the?
In their replacement? Yep. Yep, so that one will get replaced, um. I don't know where it's at in the rotation. I'm kind of lost track of where those all are, but yeah. It'll, it'll be replaced there. Uh, and then we, we did get rid of the old, old.
Oh, yeah, the old.
The old, old trash truck. We got rid of that one.
Nineteen eighty-three.
Yeah. It's a beast. You say that, yeah, but it, it ran. It always like, it always fired up.
Which was the one that, uh, had the tendency to leak hydraulic fluid everywhere.
Yeah.
Actually, that's all of them.
Oh, they all kind of do that, yeah.
Freightliner has been the worst. I've got all the leaks on the engine, power steering, all that stuff fixed. Now I'm working on the back. Gonna get that in and start working on hydraulics on the back of it.
So you excited about moving in up here? Is that gonna be a good deal?
Not to be selfish, but I'll have my own place. So definitely looking forward to it.
Great. Any other questions for David? You know, again, I have to say that, uh, we taught, we looked at when we bought that Peterbilt, and we looked at compared, compared it to, you know, contracting out our, our trash service. And, uh, Barney, you were, you were part of the decision, but, uh, you know, I think we decided that, uh, being in control of that is, is, we're pretty important, you know?
I thought so too.
And, uh, it's definitely one of those that you may be able to save a, a nickel, but, uh, in the end, you caught, it costs you a dime because, uh, you can't get the service, you know, from a, from a contractor that you can get from our own operated, uh, service.
We found that out in Flagstaff. They were, they were self-operated. And people switch over to Waste Management or one of the other companies. They weren't in town, so everybody had to wait till whenever they decided to get there to take care of it. We could take care of everything on the same day.
And I would say that, uh, you know, uh, that's one of the departments that people, uh, people tend to make calls about if they
Notice that one.
feel like, uh, we've, uh, got their trash handled properly, we hear about it, don't we?
Oh, yeah, a lot.
Well, I appreciate it. I think you guys do a great job and, and, uh, just ask you to keep up the good work. Okay?
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jeff. Good evening, ladies.
Okay. Looks like we have some business to take care of tonight. First item up on our business says section is consideration of ordinance thirteen ninety-six uh, regarding zoning for the one-on-one industrial road. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So planning commission heard this case on the, the eighteenth of July, uh, zoning change for the community hospital. We approved back in May, creating this new district. Uh, it's kind of a, a preparatory thought process that we could, you know, if we had somebody else interested in doing a hospital, that we would have opportunity to, to review that before we allowed something to happen. Um, and it's kind of in response to our situation we had down here with, uh, Harrington Hospital too, so. Um, this is kind of the next step in that and taking the old hospital property and moving it into that zone. Um, it's going from, it would be moving from an I-two, which is a heavy industrial, which everything out at the industrial park is, uh, into the HS, um, as the landowner, the public building commission is actually the main applicant, but we had uh, RSG, the hospital CEO, Mark Rooker, sign off on that as, as the building owner and operator of the hospital too, so. Um, we heard that request on July eighteenth, uh, public hearing was held, notification published, everything sent out, noticed to everybody. I had zero comments from the public, uh, on that one. That's, that's kind of typical, um, with this, this type of thing. So the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend the request, and so thirteen ninety-six changes that officially zoning, uh, one-on-one industrial road from I-two to HS, so. Um, as we kind of mentioned, there's not really any, there's not really any tax impact to this. It's at the hospital, it's like it's taxed the same way it always gets taxed. It's just, it sets up a, it sets up a situation, and if we ever have another facility that wanted to come in and do hospital operations, they'd have to go through a safe process. Uh, so that's, that's kind of how it's, it's built, and um, I think it, I think it'll be a pretty solid way to approach doing that, so. Um, don't have any, you know, planning commission made this determination, uh, they always make recommendations. I think it's their job to do that, and typically, this body has always sort of respected the planning commission's will and, and kind of taken those recommendations as they come, so. Uh, we're recommending moving forward and adopting ordinance thirteen ninety-six based on the planning commission's recommendation.
Questions? Comments? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to adopt ordinance thirteen ninety-six, uh, changing the zoning for one-on-one industrial road, uh, to HS.
A second.
Okay, councilman by moves. Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins?
Abstain.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman by?
Yes.
Okay, we have three, uh, four and one abstention, the motion carries, and the ordinance is hereby adopted, and the mayor will sign. Next item on our business is consideration of the KDOT C-clip participation form, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is, uh, the C-clip, which we applied for three separate times. Um, this is a five hundred thousand dollar award through the city connect, C-clip stands for City Connecting Link Improvement Program. This is a geometrical improvement, so it's a mouthful. Um, but what it is, is, uh, KDOT program in, in fiscal year twenty-seven, so that'll be July of twenty-seven. Um, they're gonna rebuild that intersection at fifty-six and Orchard Drive, which tried for a Sonic. Uh, the plan, as we submitted, was to do deceleration lanes like we did out by the hospital, uh, and then they'll rebuild that intersection there too, so. Uh, five hundred thousand dollars, the city's portion of that is five percent, so, uh, it's anything, you know, up to that five hundred thousand dollars, fifty-five percent, anything goes over that, we have to pay the additional over on it. Um, right now, the proposed cost is four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven eighty, uh, which includes all the design inspection. That's one of the things they will play, uh, pay for in this thing. Normally, we have to pay for that to do this. One of the things we will have to do with this is select a contractor from them, you know, EBH actually prepared the grant. Uh, we have to select a KDOT-approved contractor for this. Uh, and so they are a KDOT-approved contractor, but we'll have an opportunity to have to select them. Uh, that'll be part, part of that process, or you cannot select two, I guess, uh, just be kind of up to the city on that one. Um, so our match on this is twenty-three thousand, nine thirty-nine. Um, it's again, programmed for fiscal year twenty-seven for the state, so we have plenty of time to come up with that match, and we would use the special highway fund in order to do that. Um, you know, it's, it's pretty straightforward deal. It's, it's kind of a, a nice finally to get this. We've had some success after multiple attempts. Um, and so, uh, what you're looking at here, it's, it's sort of a quasi-resolution. They sort of set it up like that. It's really just their form. Uh, this is, this uses federal money, and so there's some different kind of formatting things with this. Uh, so basically, what you're, what you'd be approving here, adopting, uh, is Form thirteen oh-two, which accepts the KDOT C-clip grant, and it, uh, says that you're going to allocate those matching funds come fiscal year twenty-seven, so. Uh, you know, a couple of budget cycles from now, we'll have to look at putting that in there, but, uh, it's a great project. Finally, finally got approved, uh, pretty happy with that. Uh, it's just another, another one of those KDOT projects we can put in the bank and, and get, get to work on doing this, so. Uh, we're, we're recommending moving forward with adopting or approving, uh, Form thirteen oh-two, getting going on that.
Questions?
Do you have a question, Matt? Um, because you mentioned that it finally got approved. Do they give any type of justification as to what was different about this application versus old ones or?
Uh, it kind of goes into the, the KDOT black box.
Okay.
They shake it around and make a decision. Um, they actually have US fifty-six. It's, it's due for replacement. Uh, so I would anticipate at some point in the next transportation, uh, long-range plan, them to, to do the entire thing. Uh, that, that would probably be from here to, or from McPherson all the way over to US fifty, I would assume. Uh, that, that road is over thirty years old. It's in good shape still, but, uh, it is, it is time for it to begin the cycle again, so. Uh, as far as how they make that decision, I, I don't know. It's a competitive grant, and so they break, break it down by districts, and our district rates them and then sends it up to KDOT, and like I say, it gets put in the black box, and then all of a sudden, some projects get picked, some don't, and away we go. And even getting picked, you know, in twenty twenty-four, this is a twenty twenty-seven project, so you can tell how they plan their projects and kind of go from there.
This is not, however, like the Adams Street project where the portion of the, of the local match was impactful or is impactful in their decisions. It's all, this is always a five percent match.
Five percent, federal program, yeah.
If prices go up in three years, then is that on the city?
Yeah, there is a risk there, um, that they allocate based on what they anticipate this to be. Uh, the budget that was proposed by, um, by uh, EBH was inflated enough already, they thought. To be determined, though. I mean, things can change dramatically in three years, so we'll see. Uh, that's kind of when that five percent and that five thousand dollar, or five hundred thousand cap comes into play. Uh, we could be up, you know, up to that cap of twenty-five thousand would be our max on that, but then if anything does go over, then we would potentially have some more cost to pick up.
Good question.
Uh, so two items. I know this is probably not very consequential. It's in staff report form, but for clarification, um, second, third paragraph, um, the city would be responsible for any costs of five hundred thousand dollars. I think, don't we want to say any costs of over?
Exceeding, yeah.
Exceeding five hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
Um, and then the very last line, two thousand seven, two thousand twenty-seven?
Oh, yep, sorry, two twenty-seven budget, sorry. You got it.
You think I used to be a brook reader. Um, so it's probably, it probably really doesn't matter because it's not the
Right, it'll be, uh, the two thousand twenty-seven budget, and it would be any cost exceeding.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion for the council to approve slash adopt Form thirteen zero-two to accept the C-clip grant from KDOT for the US fifty-six and Orchard Drive project. Matching funds will be allocated in the twenty twenty-seven budget. Councilman McCarty moves.
Second.
Councilman Jorgensen, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we'll now consider item three, which is CDBG payout number two for the childcare center, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, so this is, these will start coming fairly regularly as this project moves forward. We actually had a walk-through yesterday. Um, it's moving along pretty well. They're, they're into framing and doing some other stuff, and the fire sprinkler guys are coming through, but I would expect this to sort of pick up as we move forward. Um, so this is the second request, uh, total amount is forty-five thousand, um, and once you make this request, we'll draw down a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight sixty-one eighty-six of the six hundred total from CDBG. Um, we've been using the matching part of that, that amount in, in our account. As you, you'll notice when you approve those vouchers and how we write those checks out. Um, effectively, we're the passer on this, and the, the childcare center is on the, on the hook for anything above the, the hundred or one point two million, which is kind of allocated through this, but, um. Yeah, so this is just a pay request for that. Uh, you can kind of see how it's broken out through, if you want to see how that is done with Weens and Company. Is, um, and how, how that amount breaks out as you move forward. Um, I can answer any particular questions you have about it, but as the CDBG recipient, the city has to approve this before we can get it through to pay.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the CDBG pay request number two, the associated invoice from Weens and Company. Councilman by moves. Councilman Wilkins, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now we are in consideration of some Hillsborough Ford invoices totaling six hundred and forty-three dollars, sixty-three cents, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, so these are just kind of some, some normal things here. Uh, we did have a, an alternator replacement on one of our older trucks. Um, this, that one will be going up for sale here shortly, hopefully. Um, but we had to fix that, and then we had some, uh, police items there. Couple different police things, actually. For a total.
Any questions? Hearing none, would accept a motion to approve the Hillsborough Ford invoices in the total totaling six forty-three, sixty-three. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Jorgensen, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstaining?
Abstain.
Uh, the motion is approved, the invoices will be paid. And we're now to our discussion session, Mr. Styles. We have a twenty twenty-five budget draft to discuss.
So, since our last meeting, there's been a couple of things that have kind of tweaked with this. Um, so the motor vehicle tax, we get a, an estimate from the county clerk's office every, every time we do this, uh, comes out. You usually get that sometime in June. Uh, after our last meeting, they sent me a revision to that. Uh, they had under, underestimated or underreported what that vehicle tax was. Um, so it was revised up, which is always good. Uh, increased to ninety-seven thousand, which is higher than I would have expected it to be. Um, of course, one that they gave me was lower than I kind of thought it should been, but here we are. So, um, the increase is twenty-four thousand. Um, vehicle-related taxes, that's motor vehicle, that's recreation vehicle, sixteen four, all, all the, all the stuff that you get on the motor vehicle tax. It gets distributed to the, um, taxable funds based on, um, an equal distribution of that, so. Or, excuse me, a proportional distribution, so if you have more, more, uh, mills that you're levying in the general fund, it gets more, a higher percentage of that than, say, rec or library or the, uh, other funds that receive taxes, so. That adjusted everything through, and I went back through and I adjusted up the smaller funds because the amount that it changed, it wasn't, wasn't significant, it wasn't a huge amount. Um, so I just adjusted those back up so that they would be even amounts to what we, we have in our ordinance, is to say that's what we're gonna levy for those. Um, so we did have some extra revenue that came into the general fund, and I went back through and looked at some of the capital expenditures, and I skinnyed up a few of them. Uh, I took two thousand out of our high school improvement projects, so that goes down to twenty-three versus twenty-five. That's not, not the end of the world. I took a thousand out of legislative department's capital improvements. Um, I cut another three thousand from the transfer to TIP fund because we went back and did some math on that, found that we probably didn't need to have that in there. Uh, and overall, I made adjustments of about ten thousand. So what ended up happening? Uh, that combination of extra revenue and the, the ten thousand in cut, uh, was, we were able to reduce the mill levy proposed from forty-two point two nine four down to forty point nine nine eight. Which doesn't sound like a lot, and it's really, it's not a huge difference. Um, but it's definitely less than when we adopted last year. It's roughly the same as what the county adjusted our mill levy to at the end of last year before they levied it. Uh, we're still three mills above the revenue neutral. So, um, you know, it's an adjustment, it's an adjustment to the positive, which is good, um, about one point two, almost one point three mills. Um, that we were able to kind of trim out of that. Uh, if you wanted to go down to the revenue neutral rate, we'd still need to cut about seventy-two thousand, um. And we would probably, but most of that's gonna have to come out of the general fund unless you want to cut the library and and some of those other smaller funds, rec fund. Uh, bond and interest really can't do too much with, uh, pretty much needs to stay where it's at, so. Um, small impact when you talk about what that does for taxpayer. We went back and ran the numbers again for the median home, which is ninety-five thousand, three hundred. Uh, so that forty-two that we originally posed, forty-two point two nine, um, would have had a tax bill of four hundred and sixty-three fifty-two. Uh, the revision there puts it down to four, four hundred and forty-nine thirty-two, uh, so it's about fourteen bucks less a year than I originally thought. Um, the total tax, again, you know, there's always that question of, well, why did you use the, the median home value? That's just the easiest thing to grab. Uh, you adjust that up and down based on how much your houses were. So if you have a, a less expensive house, it would be less. If you had a more expensive house, it would be multiplied out that way, so. Um, just sort of how we do that. Residential property, again, says to eleven and a half percent, commercial property is twenty-five percent, so there's a difference there between commercial and residential. Um, so that's kind of where I ended up with it on that, so when we went back through and, and did those revisions, uh, that's kind of where we were. We're still above the R and R rate, but it's, it's down to where, you know, what we had, you know, ultimately levied last year, once the county made their adjustments, so. Uh, I feel pretty comfortable with it, but if you want to, if you want to talk some more and want to get down into doing more cutting into it, or trying to trim that up, you could. Um, yeah, just be kind of what the council wants to do with that. If you wanted to try to hit that revenue neutral rate, we could, we can make an effort for it. Um, if we're gonna do that, though, we're probably gonna have to schedule a special meeting uh, because of the way the publication deadlines are, or we have to publish it in the newspaper, uh, Marion Record or Hillsborough Star Journal. Um, and so we have to have that in there by the twenty-first of August, and so we would have to have a meeting, special meeting before the, or a regular meeting in order to, to make those cuts, to make those decisions, so. Um, this is kind of where we're at, and I'm open to having more conversation about what you want to do with it. Um, walk you through whatever on how that looks, so.
Any further cutting? We're getting to the revenue neutral rate. Can we do that without reducing services or, or reducing, uh, what we're doing for the city?
It's a little bit tougher. Yeah, I would probably look at some of the capital stuff first, and so those are always, those are always the projects where, you know, you're, you're doing those kind of places. Uh, we could look at, you know, employee increases. That's always something too. You know, we have four percent increase for employees in there. General fund only has about forty-two thousand dollars of that. So even if you cut that out from the general fund, I presume you would cut it for everybody, but if you cut it out of the general fund, uh, that would still, that would only get you forty-two, forty-two thousand. It would, it'd get you a little over half of that. Um, so we'd still be looking at, you know, go down. So it would impact services on some level, um. Would it be Armageddon? No, but it wouldn't necessarily be great. It would be some of those things that are probably less, more quality of life and less, uh, what you would consider essential.
Any other questions?
So if nothing changes, if uh, what you just explained to us, if we don't want to pursue any of that, we're fine with where things are, then it goes, then it goes to hearing and the public gets to view and respond to the budget. Is that how that goes?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we said our public, uh, or revenue neutral hearing. I guess we, you could split them up if you wanted to. Uh, what we had kind of proposed was the revenue neutral hearing would happen on September third. Um, and so we have to do it before the end of September, or September twentieth, I think is what the date is. Um, and so we would have a little bit of time in there to do something different. If you wanted to say, set budget hearing for later, you could do that. Separate them out, um. But yeah, there'll be a public hearing. Of course, there's public opportunity now. We're talking about it. It's not like we're doing it in the back room or something, but uh, yeah, there'd be a public hearing opportunity specifically for the budget and for the revenue control.
Any other questions?
And I believe from what you said, I think it was at the previous meeting, and this is what the old number, but, um, property tax increase-wise, uh, you said would go up, um,
Property tax increase wise, uh, you said would go up, um, was it? Um, how how much did you say?
Uh, it was about twelve dollars.
Twelve dollars and so now we're looking at just fourteen.
This is going the other way, fourteen, so. You're netting twenty-six back. More or less. So, yeah, it's, I mean, when when you start getting into those numbers, it gets really. The the difference for the individual taxpayers isn't. Super significant.
Yeah.
Uh, the average, you know, normal homeowner, uh, business is going to be a little different, but um. Yeah, I mean, it the more we have to cut there, it has a disproportionate impact on how we deliver those services, I guess is what I would say.
Yes, yes, and. I mean, and we don't. Of course, we we care about our, you know, constituents and whatnot. But we also enjoy the services that we have and the quality of those services and. I mean, it is just something to consider how much we do want to cut back on the services and, I mean, and yes, uh. Along with the wage increases for employees as well. I guess. What am I getting at here? I. I think our city does a pretty good job of taking care of. Uh, not only employees but citizens and I'd really hate to. Go back on. Doing that, that makes sense, you know? And. I'm I'm sorry, I'm because I'm trying to take the situation accordingly and whatnot. I'm not trying to undercut anything. But, you know, you've gone through the budget and you've cut out an extra ten thousand, which is nice, and we have um the extra income. From, you know, the vehicle taxes. I. I mean, I'm fine with moving forward. I mean, obviously I'm fine with other conversations as well. Um, and of course, the public, but. I I do like the spot that we're in. I guess if anybody. Has any contradictions for me, and that's fine. I'm open to it. Um, I would be fine with moving along into the. Uh, taking it to the public and what the public has to say.
Okay.
So, since you've been here, Matt, um. What ha- have the increases look like? I mean, roughly, just give us an idea. Have we been pretty commensurate with this or?
Actually, we've been pretty steady.
Okay.
Uh, pretty steady where we're at. Uh, we actually, when we, when I first started, we ended up, I think we're down two or three mills from where we first started. Uh, four years ago, so this is the fourth budget I've done there. And so we've we've kind of hovered around that. I think it started at forty-three or forty-four and it's we're about forty now. You know, I've been hovering there, so.
Okay.
Uh, it's pretty consistent where it's at. Um. You know, as you as you grow, you know, of course, obviously costs have gone up, but we've been able to kind of adapt to that with with our revenue streams increasing.
I think, uh, I think it's 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 a it's a balance. It's always a balance, you know, and and uh, you know, Matt mentioned capital and one of the things that we have done. As a city in the past, when we have made cuts is we have made cuts uh in capital to our. Detriment long term. Because if we don't keep up with some of these capital expenditures, the costs of doing those just. Can get out of hand as well. And then when you get into the point where you have, it's not a want to, it's a have to. Then uh, then we have found ourselves in trouble in the past. We've also, uh, you know, been in a position, uh, you know, this was before my time, but I've heard Councilman McCarty. Refer to it more than once where we have, you know, cut wages, where we have cut benefits. And, you know, I think those are never positives, you know? If if the situation is extreme, that's one thing, but I don't think we're in that extreme position. That would cause us to need to do that. So. I personally am very comfortable with with this. I would ask the council, has anyone heard, had any input from anyone? About the budget?
I I haven't heard any negative input from anybody regards to it. So, and I mean, obviously that 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 can change as we continue to move forward and whatnot, but. You know, I, I mean, like you're saying, don't want to just be cuts and cuts to try to hit the revenue neutral. And then we're having to play catch up later down the road or, you know. Scorning people and, you know, employee wise and by cutting benefits and especially. I mean, nowadays, it's, I mean, things are hard, you know, I mean, things, things are expensive and. And I think by keeping the good staff that we have, by not cutting back on those benefits and. You know, keeping the group that we've that we've made is important. So.
I would agree. I would agree. So, um, would you like some council direction or do you want, do we need to take some action here?
Well, if you're good, so it's kind of.
It sounds like the council was good with the budget that you put together.
Yeah, if we're good with that, then what we'll end up doing is, uh, we'll publish it, this number, which is the revised number against a little lower. Of what we it came out originally with. Um, and then we'll set that hearing for the September third date. We'll have revenue neutral and the budget hearing at that time. That'll be within our window to to make those changes. Um. Once you publish it, you can you can go down, but you can't go back up. Um, so we're kind of where we're at. Uh, if something was to change, you still would have an opportunity, I guess. That would be the thing to say is you'd have an opportunity to make some changes if you wanted to later on as well. So. If you you came, you came in here on September third and the place is full and people had pitchforks and torches out, you can still make those changes. Um, you can cut it down, but you can't go back up. So, um, but yeah, that's what we would do.
So my question to Andrew would be, I, it seems like. We should take some action in in uh voting on uh publishing this budget in the paper. Is that, is that appropriate or not?
Do that, it's 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 not necessarily required because it's a statutory requirement for the budget process, but I know a lot of cities that do. Uh, after you've gone through this, you know, either by motion, which would be the appropriate thing here. You go ahead and authorize the city to publish this under this budget. I think that would be a good idea.
That's not approving the budget, that's just authorizing publication of the budget.
Setting of the of the budget public hearing for September third, yeah.
And publishing it in the newspaper. So, would somebody care to make that motion?
I will.
Party moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is a strategic plan update and looking through that, uh, it's kind of exciting to see. All the things that have been done.
Yeah, we've got a lot going on there. Um, so I just kind of, I I usually start with this. This is, I think, the second time. I don't know, Ron, how many of these have you been? Second time we've done this?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I think this may be Jeff's first.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So what we do is we take, we have this spreadsheet and, you know, we keep a kind of a rolling total and I I keep basically years worth of history on there. And then I delete the bottom half and uh do an update and we just kind of go through it. Tier one goals first, childcare, housing, workforce. And then we do the other three sets and just kind of go from there. So, uh, for this this quarter, which ended in June. Um. A little behind, but we're getting there. We had to do the budget. So, uh, you're getting a little a little bit of a late update, but. Um, for the childcare center, Weens Construction's moving forward with that. Um. K D H E provided Brownsville money and fifty thousand to do some remediation. We actually got a few things that they. They missed on the first round and so they're going back in, they're going to have to fix that, but uh, everything seems to be moving pretty, pretty well with that. We're still on the timeline. For uh the twenty, uh, February of twenty-five and if you want to see some pictures, I was, did a walkthrough yesterday, so. Put some pictures up and we can kind of take a look at what I took pictures of. Uh, so this is the fire suppression system. In case you don't know what one of those looks like for a building this big. Um, that's the main line, uh, running through the sanctuary. Well, actually, that's the the lower part and then. These are tees out and it has the biggest hose novel drops I think I've ever seen for a fire suppression system. Um, so it's got that, uh, let's see here.
Is that like what this uh little sprinkler heads runoff of?
Yeah, these right here are the sprinkler heads for this.
Okay.
Uh, so they've got these mains and then the drops into each of the rooms. Maybe I had a option, I can just scroll, but I can't. Um, so this is, this is the kitchen. So wow, that's what it looks like now. It's just a blank box.
That looks so.
Yeah, it's going to be quite a bit different than if you've ever been into that church and seen what it used to look like.
Are they going to keep that as the kitchen?
Yeah, it's going to stay in the same footprint. This is just a uh rough framing for the two infant rooms. You can kind of see where those go and this next picture is the same thing. Uh, this is looking the other direction back at it. Uh, really, the cool stuff is in the sanctuary, though. This, well, this is, this right here is. Uh, the community room that they had before, so you can kind of see where this is, this is where the kitchen bump out will be, this is the air return and storage for the kitchen. Uh, they're doing some framing here. The really interesting is the, hold on, I gotta get back, I'm a cursor. Okay, so this is the sanctuary. Wow, looking up to that's where the. You know, all the, everything was at. And so we've got these ginormous walls that they're framing in here. Uh, and then we've got the hallway, which is kind of cool too. That is, uh, they're building a hallway out of whole cloth there so that we can make three separate, uh, those are toddler and mixed use rooms there. So it's uh moving forward with that. Uh, they got the basements completely tore up. There's not the great pictures of that, but then this is. Uh, the front of the building, they had to do, they're doing an addition to the front. This is where they blew out the entire front half of the building and this is. Uh, well, the entire foyer area, I guess I should say. They came back in and poured a new foundation. We had to end up over excavating here. And putting back about a foot and a half of dirt because it was nasty clay. All that money that you guys approved goes to, it's that, that that part of that project. Uh, like I say, the basement's kind of a a huge mess right now, but. Uh, it's it's getting sorted out and they're, they're still on track to to make that, um, that February twenty-five.
How are we doing with the contractor keeping the mud and things off the streets? Because I, uh, that is something I do get citizen complaints about.
I think we, I think we've actually put more mud on the street and we've done that. Uh, we did a water tap for them. And then we we're going to be doing a water fire line extension. Uh, I think they're doing okay. Uh, we we had some issues. Uh, with the water departments, we cleaned that up, got that pretty well taken care of. When I was there yesterday, it didn't seem too bad.
Yeah, I drove by yesterday. It was a lot better than it was.
Seemed like it was pretty clean. They got construction fence all the way around and they tried to keep it fairly well contained. I know the alleyway seemed. It's pretty heavy traffic too, so we'll probably have to go back through and do some work on that, but. Uh, overall, I think not bad for a construction site.
Sure.
Bad. Um, yeah, so those are kind of pictures. That's where that project is and I gotta get rid of these. Yeah, so that's where we're at on the daycare center, moving forward there. Any questions on the daycare? Again, when.
What was the number again for, because I know we had to cut back, um, can do things in stages, uh, for budget reasons. How many, how many kids are we?
Well, they didn't actually end up reframing it as uh stages. They just sort of trimmed some pieces out of the project, so it's still ninety-nine kids.
Okay.
Um, it'll be Feb- like February twenty-five, ninety-nine kids. They've got. Uh, we're working with the board, I guess I should say, is working on staffing and doing some of that stuff and prep for that, so. Yeah, things are home, things are going well with it.
Good.
Uh. You know, Tristan, who's been kind of the leader of that project, she's out on maternity leave for another. Can't remember how many weeks. I had a countdown because I'm the project manager right now for that. Um, but it's, she'll she'll be back like the first part of October, so that'll be good, but. Uh, yeah, ninety-nine is kind of the managing number for that. And once you hit a hundred. Your K D H E regulations change dramatically and so you have to, you have to think about that. Um, now, the basement is completely sprinkled. It's going to be ready. There need to be some additions to the building to make access work, but you could turn around and flip and and add another. Almost a hundred kids down there too, if you certified it for the right way. Yeah.
Number is a certification thing and it's all have to meet a whole other set of standards to.
Once you go, once you hit a hundred, uh, then you have to have two full-time people that are certified in certain things.
Um.
And so that was, it gets to be more expensive and you have to have, you really can't just have the hundred, you need more like a hundred thirty for the finances. So. It's tricky, but you know, the 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 place is built that you could do that if you wanted to. Just got to get there. Yep, it's moving along, doing well with that. Uh, housing, some cool stuff has happening in housing. So I sent out before I went on vacation that we did get awarded the uh Orchard Ridge Development Project, very exciting. Uh, so that's the twenty-four units, twelve duplexes, uh, moderate income individuals. Um, that's being designed right now. I talked with Byron a little bit. Before I left, uh, they are interested in doing an R H I D, so that's going to put it into a little bit different uh category. Originally, we were talking about when they were doing private infrastructure, uh, they wouldn't necessarily have to replat it the way it was set up. I think they probably will have to replat this when they do that because that'll be public infrastructure and so we're going to be dedicated easements and things like that. So. Uh, we're kind of moving that project, moving that project through the the paces in a meeting with Darren to talk about some civil stuff on it. Very excited about moving forward with that. Um. Yeah, their project timeline, when we, we talked about it, they're thinking they're going to break ground by the end of the year, hopefully, if everything lines out right. And then have units open starting in the middle of half next year. So, uh, moving along, moving along real well.
So are there, do we anticipate it kind of, you know, being a high demand and people are just going to be jumping into that or?
I think so, yeah. I've had three or four people who said they're interested in moving.
Really, okay.
Yeah, I got one person that calls fairly regularly. I got her name tacked on the board, uh, ready to go. I heard. Agnotally, somebody had sold their house in town and was waiting to move into those. They were thinking they were going to downsize. I don't know, I wouldn't advise that. Let's stay in your house until we get something built, but um. Yeah, I think though, I think they're going to get picked up on. I really think they won't have any trouble with it. Um. And and the way that's designed, if they wanted to flip around and do another twenty-four units, they could do that, get the space.
Hmm.
Do another one, so.
Okay.
Yeah, pretty cool project. And great partner on that one. Um. And then the container home thing, they've, they've been kind of in a holding pattern. Uh, they're looking at some different material stuff and. Uh, they were asking me about finding a fabricator to help them with some things in town and I've been trying to connect them with a few people. Uh, I don't, I don't think it's dead or anything like that. I just think that they're trying to figure out how to make that a little bit more financially. Uh, makes sense for them. Uh. Things, I guess, in that market, I don't know. Um, but that's, it's, it's, it's still on the target. We're just trying to connect them with some resources, so. Uh, container homes aren't going in anytime soon, but.
Think, didn't they, one thing else you need to put, was it a fire hydrant?
Um, yeah.
On that corner too?
There's a fire hydrant and some other infrastructure stuff that they need to work through. So that's kind of where housing is right now. We've got a couple of other things we met with, um. We, uh, Callie and I met with the Department of Commerce, uh, Monday. Walked him around downtown and talked about some different projects there. One of the things we talked about was upstairs housing. Uh, that's a big push for the Department of Commerce. They've opened up some other tools for some of that stuff and there's maybe some more coming, so. Uh, it might be something we can look at doing in the future. Uh, we did walk through the Eric Driggers' project, uh, one twenty-six North Main. Did some signups on that and that's still something that he's thinking about, but I think the cost for that and the way that things are set up there might be a little bit of a barrier for him, so. Uh, we'll see how that shakes out on that project, but the the other one we talked, we've talked a great deal about, uh, the quick, quick flicks building. Uh, gotta find a new name for that. That one really doesn't trigger me, but um. That's, that's one of those ones that 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 building has had so many different iterations of different things over the years and so. Um, excited to have it in local ownership and being able to try to move forward with it, but they had some good ideas as to how you could maybe address that, maybe move forward, so. Uh, really, really positive meeting with them yesterday. Any had, any questions on housing stuff?
So you're actually talking about housing on top of a lot of the buildings on Main Street, is that?
Yeah.
Is there actually a lot of like empty space?
There's two, potentially a third. Um, well, there's a couple of other ones too, but those are used for storage right now.
Storage, okay.
Yeah, so the the one, the building over here, uh, one-on-one South Main, that one is. Yeah. So the, the one, the building over here, uh, one on one South Main, that one is set up for that. But the, the damage there is pretty significant. So it's gonna be a pretty big investment. Uh, the Old Town Building, similar, well, it's not, it's not a damage issue there. It's just the layout and some other things that are gonna be a problem with that. So, and then there's been a couple of other people that have expressed sort of a vague interest, would say, but we'll see. I don't know. Maybe if somebody gets one done, then they'll, they'll kinda spark some more interest. Okay, so that's housing stuff. Uh, workforce development. Um, so, the, under this one, we have the C, the C CAC, uh, such our entrepreneurship centers in there too. So, uh, that, we're gonna be talking about that, I think, as strategic plan coming up for the next year. Uh, they're participating in some, some more programming, some more local things, um, and they're, you know, moving forward, it sounds like with the renovation of the, uh, M D R, yeah. So that, that process, uh, that's, that will be the new home for the, um, entrepreneurship center. And so we'll kinda see what that looks like as we move forward too. Um, the high school, middle school is launching a job shadowing program for twenty four, twenty five. Uh, pretty cool product. This is, this is really neat. I like this one. Uh, so every high school student will be required to do a job shadowing with the local employer for at least one day in a school year. Um, and so they, they're just sort of launching this. They asked me to help kinda get the word out. It's a partnership between them and Workforce One and cities. We're, we're sort of facilitating and helping, but, uh, it's really, they've taken on to this and then been started building onto it. So it's really cool. Uh, we connected a lot of employers to them. I had a lot of people to raise their hand and say, yeah, I think that'd be great if we could have some job shadowing. So, yeah, I think it'll be cool. Uh, that'll be a really interesting one. And then, uh, the mayor and I went to a, a presentation, was it last Friday?
Friday.
Yeah. Um, Ronnie Davis.
Well.
Yeah, put on, kinda facilitated it. Uh, and so we had, uh, the, a lot of different presentations, three, um, but one of them was about the D O D. Department of Defense has a skill bridge program, um, which s- s- takes and puts veterans into job placement and they have to learn a skill. Um, there has, there's, it's a process, it sounds like, but you know, it sounds like a really positive thing, cause the Department of Defense will actually pay for that person to be employed with you and, or can pay your benefits and things. So, um,
I know there's like ninety days.
Yeah, I would, I think it was almost six months, wasn't it?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
I know it was at least three months.
Hmm. So it's really, really cool program. Uh, not a lot of people around here are using it. It's really popular in Wichita. Uh, Coke, Textron, those places use it a lot, but, uh, I think it's something that we could use for our employers here too. So, um, it's pretty positive movement with that. I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Just, just, uh, again, everything that, uh, that we talked about, uh, there was, there was a guy doing a housing project. And then there's a, uh, a, uh, a program for homeless vets in Wichita. That's, that's being, being, uh, uh, really, it seems well done.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, I would love to see Hillsboro, you know, be more open to, uh, you know, you heard David talk about, you know, the, our newest sanitation employee is a veteran, you know, but I'd love to, I'd love to help, you know, make Hillsboro a vibrant veteran community. And we have a lot of veterans, don't get me wrong, but, uh, I think there's, uh, a lot of people that are getting ready to, uh, to, uh, separate, as they call it, from the service, either through retirement or for other reasons, that, uh, you know, are gonna need a place and, and, uh, you know, I know that our manufacturers and in our service industries in town have needed, you know, good people and, you know, the people in the military are used to, uh, being punctual and, and, and showing up and, and being available. So, uh, and there's, you know, there's a lot of those kinda training. Those are not necessarily job skills, but they're certainly requirements for, for a good employee. So,
Mm-hmm.
you know, really help make the base, you know, create a great base. So I'd love to see us look at opportunities. I'd, I wouldn't be, wouldn't mind if the city could participate in this skill bridge program. You know, that might be a way for us to find out if we've got, cause we're still looking for some people, I know, on the water sewer side. So, street department.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we're, yeah, so there's an opportunity there, I think, and not, yeah, for us and also for, or just other businesses, I think. There are, it seemed like we'd be looking for people. And so maybe this is a great opportunity to do that.
This is, this is Ronnie Davis. He's the one who used to be here in town.
Yeah.
Okay, seventeen for years.
Yeah, he's still, uh, he's still, uh, goes about ninety miles an hour with his hair on fire.
Yeah.
He's a high speed, low drag, that's for sure.
He's a good guy.
Yeah, he is. And he's got a real passion for this. And, uh, I saw a post that he put out on social media today on Facebook that talks about his uncles. And he has three uncles that, that served in the military and, and, uh, maybe two of them have passed away because of cancer-related situations where they were exposed to different chemicals and, well.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
So, yeah, we're making, making some strides in workforce, which has been probably, probably the toughest one to crack for us. I mean, that's, it takes a lot of community partners, a lot of different things that we don't have control over. Uh, we're just more facilitating that. So, uh, community development, your two goals. So it's, you know, this goal has a splash pad, community gardens, some of those other things, uh, more planning, comprehensive stuff too. Uh, splash pad's been really, really heavily used this summer. We finally got everything. The valves replaced to where it doesn't leak all the time, which is awesome. Uh, we've been able to get that.
Is that what made the runoff down to Washington?
Yeah, we had a lot of runoff, cause we were having, uh, we were having, we had a few valves that wouldn't close.
Uh.
So we've had to go back through. We've learned a lot about how to run those things, um, through the second season. So, uh, yeah, of course, we've had a couple of events there and, uh, it's been pretty good. We're, we're gonna keep, keep that one open through Labor Day. And probably we kinda play that one by ear. If it's still a hundred degrees, we'll keep it open longer. It's not staffed and so. Yeah, we can keep it open longer. So, uh, we probably won't keep it open to arts and crafts, but who knows? Maybe we'll see. Um, that's one of those ones. Uh, community garden's been maintained this year by fifth grade families. I got a fifth grader and I know we've been out there. Um, so it's been pretty good. Um, we, we keep, you know, a fair amount of money there to that, fifteen hundred bucks. Uh, just to kinda keep moving and they get other grants and stuff too. Um, that's actually gonna be the location there. The footprint of that may need to shift a little bit, uh, further to be the east. Uh, the Bartle House project, which is kinda coming into its own as far as funding goes, we'll, we'll go in front of that and it kinda, though they should be able to coexist, but, um, make it a little bit, little bit smaller footprint next year. But, um, the community garden, whenever they, they do that, there is produce out here. If you, they take it to Main Street Ministries and some other places around town too. But if you need some produce, there actually is some out here today, if you need potatoes and stuff. Uh, so if you wanna grab something from the community garden, we tend to have some of it down here too. Uh, our capital improvement plan for the parks, this one's kinda started and stopped a couple of different times. Uh, so with David Edgar on board, we've already kinda talked about how we can move forward with that. He's got a lot of great ideas, uh, and so we're gonna move forward with doing that. We've got a couple of grant applications we put in for, uh, different trails and things like that. We've been real successful. So hopefully we continue to get some success with that. Um, so I think we're gonna hit, I know we've hit our three additional trail grants for expansion, um, which is in the, in the plan, but, you know, hopefully we'll get some more of that and be able to do some more expansion on that. The one, the one goal in this, this, or the one strategy in this goal that's really been tough is the comprehensive plan update. That is just, it takes so much time. Um, it's something that needs to get done. Uh, almost every community struggles with this. Uh, your comprehensive plan is your plan. It's basically, it's like a land use plan and a lot of times it, you know, it's got different sections. It's set up by the state. It's a beast. Um, it does have a lot of, yeah, we can source it. It's just as expensive to do.
I'd be interested in, uh, in, in finding out what, what the cost would be.
Yeah, we can do that.
Because at some point, it's gotta be cheaper than, uh, than taking labor away from other projects.
Yeah.
I mean, you know.
It takes a ton.
I, I just think it'd be worth looking at.
Yeah, that's what a lot of people end up doing. A lot of communities, it just takes so much time and research, but, um, that'd be something that, that has been tricky, uh, here. But otherwise, we make quite a bit of progress on this. We've got phase two, the community plaza. We were just talking about that with our Department of Commerce folks. So, uh, there's some interesting opportunities there too, I think, so. Uh, our financial stability goal seems to be moving pretty well there. Of course, we did the, we got an affirmed, affirmed A minus rating with some upward pressure there. Maybe see an increase on the next one. Uh, for our, our credit score, our credit rating, I guess I should say, credit score, but, um, yeah, so that, that's moving forward. And that's always a positive indication that somebody outside the agency is rating you. So you kinda know that that's moving in the right direction. Uh, we've been pretty good about reviewing rates. Again, uh, take those up in, in twenty four. We need with the water and trash. Uh, and then of course we'll bring back the credit card processing fee conversation too. Uh, the, the comprehensive fee schedule is one other thing that's been kinda stuck, but Danielle and I've been working on that and I think we'll get that moved and, and finish here this year yet. So, uh, then we got our road projects that we're doing. So those are tied to the, uh, capital improvement plan. And so we hope to have, uh, Ab Street here completed in September, hopefully. Um, they're gonna be back, into this month to start doing some more work on that. Uh, and then Lincoln and Wilson are in design and the construction will be probably, it's probably gonna be early twenty five, I think. I don't, I don't anticipate it going out and getting started this year. So it may go out to bid, but I don't know when it started. So that's kinda how those projects are moving forward with that. Um, we did have a little bit of a hiccup with our Adam Street project. You know, we, we came in and did a special meeting to approve that agreement with K dot. Uh, there was, there were some issues with that and how that ends up doing it. Uh, we paid a portion of that project already, which then won't, because we didn't have the, uh, contract agreed to with Ada, that won't count toward the match. Um, so there'll be a little bit of this, this project we've done that won't be able to count toward the match. We should be able to make that up, I think. Uh, just a cross wire and a communication issue. Uh, I, I, it's mine me, cause it came to me. I thought we had put it in the packet with all the bond stuff. We didn't. And so that's where the issue is. So we'll, we'll have to kinda figure out a way to pick some of that up, but I think we'll be able to get it. One of those things that unfortunate, but we didn't get the, all the cross checking on that one then. Uh, let's see here. So that's financial stability. Any questions on any of that? Those are all sort of ongoing things. Um, and then fire station's the next thing. So, interesting with that. Uh, had a conversation with our guy, our, our contact through Jake Le Turner's office, uh, about the appropriation request that we had in. He said that the committee chair had taken it out of, of, they had asked quite a few of the appropriation requests. Uh, but he said it wasn't dead and he was gonna try to get it past the finish line. So I don't know what that means in Washington speak.
Hmm.
Um, I'm not planning on it. I really wasn't like banking on it anyway, but, uh, that's just where it's at. So that's where you know where it's at. Uh, the committee is working with this, with Sheldon Architects. We actually took a tour of the Hutch's new fire station by the fairgrounds. Got some really great ideas out of that. Uh, we're gonna kinda keep moving forward with it. Uh, Callie and I met with the USDA staff, uh, last week. And so we've got the application process going for, uh, rural development financing. If that's something we wanna do, it seems like probably the best direction to move forward with that, if we're gonna do it. Um, we're also gonna talk with Jerry Moran's office a little bit more. That's, that's what I kinda got. Flew into them. We, we're working with Le Turner, cause he was really excited about it. Uh, but we'll move on to Jerry, uh, Jerry Moran's office, cause they're, they tend to be a little bit more stable. Uh, of course Senator, and he loves those. Yeah, Jerry's a big Hillsborough fan. Uh, and then of course we had Derek Schmidt in here last, last week, Thursday. He came in and toured the station. Of course, he's up for all the primaries today. So hopefully you remembered to go out and vote. He's, he's your guy if you want. He, he's really interested in the Hillsborough, uh, fire station project. He's really, really nice guy. Uh, of course, and I think anybody who gets elected there would probably be wanting to help with it. So, um, so, yeah, they're, they're looking at a couple of programs there, uh, continuing to do that. Had some conversations with Casey's again. Um, told them, look, this is, this is a real project that's gonna be happening. Made the pitch again that we do a land swap with them. They can build a new store. I think everybody wins on that. Uh, we'll see. They're, they're still very interested that they, there, there are always cagey with that. They don't wanna tip their hand on anything. But they seem pretty interested in having a further conversation as we got closer. Uh, like, well, it's pretty close now. So I know how long it takes you guys to do anything. What's it gonna be? Um, we'll see what it is and, you know, continue talking with them, cause that will negatively impact their operations if we do put that fire station there. They need to do something different. So, uh, we'll just keep moving with that and kinda keep it on their radar and keep it. Professional approval. I, I would advise USDA, and I think Greg Barnberg had mentioned that would be right, the best option too. So, um, you know, if that's something we wanna do, we can kinda get that process rolling. Takes a while. So.
Well, we've got, uh, we've got, uh, Bonds retiring next year and, and in twenty six. That will help give us a little room on the top end, you know, for, uh, for taking on some additional, additional financing. One thing I know for sure is it's not gonna get cheaper to build. It's just not. And longer, again, that goes back to that, you know, pay now or pay later.
Hmm.
And, uh, the, the bill that I really don't wanna pay is the bill that comes when, uh, we have a catastrophe because we couldn't respond quickly enough to a fire or some other disaster. And right now with the equipment in two locations, bunker gear here, you know, equipment down there. And, uh, you know, I think it's been a couple of years ago, we sit since the fire on the fish property out here west of town. But, uh, Chief Steckity told me that they were literally seconds, if not just minutes away from losing that house. Had they not got there when they did. And, you know, it's just those kind of things that, you know, yes, houses can be replaced, but, you know, God forbid, we're talking about somebody's life, you know. So, it's not, it's not in nothing. I mean, it's not just, oh, you can, you can get by. Well, we're just getting by it right now. And at some point, you know, for the betterment of everybody, the safety of this community, we gotta do something.
And our equipment's just getting too, too big for the facilities we have now versus how many people are more either on the department or wanting to join. We have what, thirty people?
Twenty eight officially and a couple of prospecting.
That's, that's a good problem to have, I guess.
Yeah, that's the best, that's the best problem to have for volunteer fire department. For sure.
Any other comments or questions regarding this strategic plan? I'm guessing that, I think we talked about probably October now for our update. We need to get through the budget approval and, and so forth. But it probably sometime in October, we're gonna be getting serious about getting this plan updated. I think you can see by the report that Matt presented that it's been, uh, it's been very successful for us in terms of guiding us and directing our efforts so that we know that we're working on the right things. And so, uh, again, credit to you, Matt, for, uh, for keeping us focused and, and keeping us updated on this plan. I mean, too many times it just goes up on a shelf and, and gets dusty. Our, our plan hasn't gotten much dust on it. So, thanks again.
We wanted to say that, um, I appreciate this document being new. It's, it helps to see some of the history and how that's flowed up to where we are today. So, thank you.
Yep. We tried to keep a year on there, but if you were interested in going further back, we've got it all. You go here. All right, perfect. Let's get it.
We're gonna certainly be counting on you to, uh, help us as we, uh, as we update it. So be looking forward to everybody's input and participation. All right. Next item up is city administrators' report. We'll let you keep going.
All right. Uh, I think we talked about it. We talked about the lunch and learn with the veterans.
Right.
Covered that. So we're good there. Uh, Cal Ripken tournament update, just to wrap up there. Uh, they finished on twenty first. Uh, the C B L, which is Cottonwood League Valley or Valley League, excuse me, that's the league we play in. Uh, their all-star team ended up winning the tournament, which is great. They went and played in Denver. Uh, I don't know how they did in Denver. Uh, they maybe won one game, I think is what I heard, but, um, so they moved on to the, I guess it'd be the national tournament. That was good. Uh, yeah, and everything went really well. I got a couple of letters there from the C B L or the, excuse, Cal Ripken Commissioner there for you to read. Uh, one thanking the city for the hosting job and the other was a letter to the editor about the success of the tournament. So, uh, I think it went really well. Um, and financially it went pretty well too. I think we're gonna be looking at probably seven thousand issue dollars to the rack in the city as far as how that goes. Uh, sponsorship, ticket sales, concessions, all that stuff. So, uh, pretty big success. I felt like it went really well. I was there for a good chunk of it. And then David came back and took the other chunk, but Nate Duel was really the M V P of that. He. He, he ran, he was there every day running it, uh, doing the boots on the ground stuff, so, uh, kudos to him. Uh, they actually asked us to host the ten U and twelve U tournaments next year. Uh, they want to do them together. Which scares me a little bit, but then you start thinking about it. That's not too bad because you've already got people there for doing some, most of that stuff, ticket takers, all that concessions. Um, we got the field space, so it makes sense that you could probably do that. Uh, so, uh, I think that's something to look forward to next year. That's not official yet, but, uh, to be determined. David's excited about it, wants to have more tournaments. And I just look at the work and go, man, okay, you, you do that, man. Um, so, yeah, it went really well. Uh, FEMA maps, uh, just so you're aware of that, we kind of talked about this when we adopted the new flood plain regulations. Those are official now. Uh, so it's a five-year process. It's taken to get there, but we're ready to roll. Um, pretty much positive impact for property owners here in town. It took some, several out of the flood plain and, um, I think it really only affected one. Uh, so went pretty well with that. Pretty happy with how it is. I guess it's a FEMA thing, so you can only be. Can only just sort of live with it, but it's what it is. Uh, K P P bill, we got that for you to look at. Got a positive energy cost adjustment, which is good. So it's a credit back of ten thousand, six hundred. Uh, compared to last June, we actually sold or consumed more electricity, about two hundred thousand more kilowatt hours, which is great. Uh, we only paid about the same cost, so that's even better. Um, summer months are big months for us, as you can see with bills. Um, you know, June, kind of running through September are sort of our high, high peak months there, so. Uh, kind of take a look at how that looks. I always try to compare it to the year before. Things, things look pretty good. Uh, block party, we're kind of, we're, we're co-hosting, I guess, a block party, uh, with Chamber of Commerce and Tabor College on twenty-fourth of August. Six to ten, we're going to close down the section of Main Street here from Grand to First. Uh, they're going to have a dunk tank, which is going to be kind of fun. So I'm going to be looking for people to sit in the dunk tank if you're interested. Any no takers right up the top, that's fine. Um, but if you change your mind, yeah, if you change your mind, maybe that'll be something to do. Uh, there's pie eating contests. I think the, that might be something.
That's.
Yeah, pie eating contest.
I volunteer for them.
That'll be good. Uh, it's kind of a welcome back to, welcome back to Hillsborough. Celebrating schools starting again kind of thing, so.
It's been done before with great success, hasn't it?
Yeah, yeah. A couple of years ago, we had a really good one and, um, they've tried to tie it to cruise nights before and that's sort of a mixed deal, but. Uh, I think this will be a pretty good, pretty good event, so. Uh, music, entertainment, games. It'll be fun for everybody. Everybody can come and enjoy it. It'll be good, open for the community. Uh, city pool party, we're going to be having an employee pool party. Everybody here is of course invited to join us with that. So we're going to have a little cookout at the pool. On the eighteenth, uh, six P M. It's actually the last day, the pool is going to be open to the public too. Um, they won't be there, uh, from our party, but, uh, that'll be the last day. Uh, that's pretty typical for us. For the public to be kind of finished our regular public hours because we run out of lifeguards. They all go back to school. Um, we will still kind of have a skeleton crew there till the end of the month. And they do things like, um, toddler time and we host, uh, P E for the middle school or, yeah, the grade school and the middle school. So we'll have some of that stuff too, but we won't have regular open hours like we do normally. So. It's kind of the end of the season. That's sort of how that stuff working. Uh, tree trimming and ditch clean out. So we hired B, BP Tree Company. They actually are based kind of on West Grand. Uh, to do some trees from us. They were about three times faster than we are, uh, which is great. And so they cleared, uh, quite a few or, or, or north, south streets for us. Uh, and then if you've been down to the Ash Street Culvert there by the golf course, they're in there right now cleaning out that ditch, which I know we've talked about at the council level a couple. Several times, uh, but they're in there now doing it. Um, had to rent a big piece of equipment to do it, but. Uh, is, is a mess and it. It's going to be a mess, but it's, it's, it's good.
For those of you that remember one of the constituents living on Ash Street, Renee Platt. And her neighbor were in here to address the council on this topic and, uh, I've already gotten an email from her today. Very thankful that, uh, that the project's underway and, and looking forward to it being completed. So. I want to let the council know that she was very gracious and, and very happy that we were moving forward.
Props, props to the street department. That is a gross job. Um, that's hot and nasty and they, they pumped some out. It's still messy, but it'll be what it'll be. It'll be nice and clean by the time they're. Uh, new vehicles. Yeah, we got our first, first kind of wave, I guess, of new vehicles. First one for the street department last week. Uh, I think they got the second one.
I saw it today.
Okay.
They were out there on the project with two new vehicles.
Two new. Uh, and then the, uh, water department's got one sitting at Midway. Uh, we need to get that picked up and delivered and. Yeah, everything is going well with that. We'll start to see some more kind of filter in. I think this is going to be the first. First chunk and then we'll have a few more as they get built and delivered and outfitted and all that, so. Starting to see that come through. And that, I think, is everything I had, sir.
There was a lot on there.
Yeah.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our final opportunity for public comment. Or any members of the public that would care to, uh, to comment. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move to council comments. Councilman By.
I don't have anything tonight. Oh, uh, sorry. Just wanted to thank Derek Schmidt for coming to town last week. I think it was really eye-opening just to walk through the, uh, fire station and see how things are run at the current. Time, um, emphasizing a need for the fire station, so that's it.
He seemed really interested, didn't he?
He did.
Yeah, he was a pretty nice guy.
He told me in the car, he was very.
Did he? Yeah.
Uh, he has a bit of an affinity to Hillsborough as, as he and David Jansen.
Yep.
Were in high school together. They, they, uh, they've been friends since they were in school, so. He does have a little bit of a connection that way. Councilman McCarty.
Well, I, I would like to thank you.
Councilman Wilkins.
Um, I would just like to urge as many people from the public to, you know, show up to the. Budget hearing in September. I mean, it'd be nice to hear different opinions and, um. Perspectives on it. And if you have anything to share as well, I mean. Budget's a pretty big thing that a lot of people care about after it's already happened. So, you know, just come in. It's always open. Want to hear from you guys. Then that is it.
Yeah, trying to break my record, aren't you?
Yeah.
See if I can.
Councilman Jorgens.
Um, there wasn't much mention on the fair, but from what I observed, the county fair, looks like everything went really well. Um. Interesting on the night of the, uh, the demo derby, there was a, uh, the, the fire crew had to leave for a little bit to take care of a fire at the car wash or something. So that was, that was interesting. I assume that all came out fine. Um, I had, uh, texted, it was towards the beginning of the fair. I'd not texted, but I sent it. Or I contacted Danielle, um, because I was kind of out in the area that evening and I know it's not anything we could have predicted. But the fireworks from the baseball tournament were going off at the same time as a horse show. At the arena. And so I don't know if we got any negative feedback on that or not. Danielle said she hadn't heard much at that time.
Not a lot, no.
The fireworks show wasn't that long.
It wasn't very much, yeah. And they happened to, uh, it ended up, that ended up going on earlier than we anticipated. Um. Chief Steckety was going to give a warning to the, the, to the, uh, horse show people. But he was driving back and they, the game ended early because of a run rule. So they were actually setting off the fireworks right when he pulled off. So he didn't have a chance to, to give him a fair warning on that and it ended up being a whole thing, but, uh, yeah, it wasn't very long and I don't know that it would.
It didn't bother him too long, I don't think. So that's good. That's good.
He didn't have a stampede then.
No.
Right, no stampede, thankfully. Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
You.